I'd like to call the Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Would you please call the roll?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaroski, Klug, Stube, Inberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have two special presentations. We do these each year, and they're very important. For Parks and Recreation, of course, we know from a lot of national recognition we get and from the National Citizen Survey we do how important quality of life is and the role that both Parks and Recreation play in that. We have the Papillion Race Series that runs, and we want to give recognition tonight both to our Race Series winners from 2017, along with the business sponsors from 2017 who we couldn't do this without. So, we're going to start first with the Race Series winners. Make sure you get the right sheet. And just for people that might be here, Lori Hansen is the Recreation Director, and Tim Moran does all of the work. So, thank you. Thank you. Lori, thank you for the leadership. Tim, thank you for everything you do on the Race Series. And they'll be handing out the awards. But, a little bit of an overview for people that might not be aware, or just a reminder, the Race Series is the half marathon, 10K, 5K. There's also duathlon, triathlon, the kids' triathlon, a Twilight Criterium, and the Twilight Dash, which are both a 10K and a 5K. So, about a series of six events. Some of the events have two or three items, so very, very serious. This year, the duathlon was canceled because of the storm that occurred and the damage on the trails, but other than that, every other year that's been held. Actual participants in the events is just shy of 1,400 participants in the series. A little over 1,200 of those are from Nebraska, 42 different cities this year. 395 of those are almost 29 percent are Papillion residents, and 137 come from 20 different states: Alabama, Arkansas, California, Colorado, Washington DC, Georgia, Iowa, Kansas, Louisiana, Maryland, Minnesota, Missouri, New Jersey, North Carolina, Ohio, South Dakota, Texas, Virginia, Washington, and Wyoming. And almost every year, try to find somebody from out of state and ask them, "You happen to just be here, right?" And most of the time, it's, "No, we came here for this series." People have goals of doing a triathlon in all 50 states, or different reasons. So, it's not just a fun event, even though a third of the participants are from inside of Papillion. It actually is tourism, some economic development, so a pretty serious event that adds to the quality of life. So, I don't, I just want to share that, so people understand the scope of the Race Series and what these business partners help us with. Anybody that participates in the Race Series gets a point, and if they participated in all the events in a year, they get some additional points. And from that, then, there's an overall male and female winner, a first place in the age group, a second place, and a third place, and they get points for those. In addition to the participants, there's over 300 community volunteers that help with the race, and in addition to that, we've got staff from the recreation, parks, facilities, public works, police, and fire that also help with it. And we will hear almost every year from the participants about how safe they feel on this event because of how it's put together, and that's both the staff and the volunteers. So, thank you. But anyway, on to the 2017 champions. And I think most of them are here. And if you track this year to year, you'll hear a couple of familiar family names. The youth age group 10 and under, Leo Krieger of Papillion. Leo here? If you want to come on up. He completed the 5K course in the half marathon, and he also completed the 5K in the Twilight Again, that's of all those 1,300, it was a Papillion winner. The next one, the youth age group 11 to 14, Peyton Jorsik, also a Papillion. So Peyton completed the 5K course in the half marathon, the 10K in the Sumter Twilight Dash, and was first place in her age group. The next one I don't think is here. Youth and young adult from 15 to 19, Aaron Stahl of Bellevue, second year in a row for winning. Oh, Mom and Dad. So, actually won it along with Mom and Dad. Completed the 10K course in the half marathon, first place in his age group, completed the Mayor's Triathlon, and completed the 10K in the Twilight Dash and got first place in his age group. Overall female, Sarah Stahl, also a Bellevue. So again, second year in a row getting that with her husband and her son. The half marathon, second in her age group, the Mayor's Triathlon, second in her age group, and the 10K course, the Twilight Dash, and was the overall female winner. And the male, Nathan Stahl of Bellevue. Half marathon, third place in his age group, completed the triathlon, completed the 10K in the Twilight Dash, and was the overall male winner. And again, 14, almost 1,300 participants, and the highlights were Papillion and Bellevue. And we wouldn't do the Race Series without the business sponsors. It takes a lot of city staff and dollars, but we wouldn't be spending general fund dollars and property tax just to put on a Race Series, and it does have an economic development impact, and again, we really want to thank the businesses. In addition to the Race Series, they also help us with Sumter Amphitheater. Eight Starlight movie series, which are free to the community because of their sponsorship. We have the Swingin' at Sumter concerts. There's five of those which are free. And bands are both national touring and local ones with some regional notoriety that come out. Six concerts on Sunday in the Unplugged Series, nine free concerts specifically for our seniors, and then five specifically young musician performance evenings. And there's about 5,000 participants that come out to those free events that are because of these businesses. Also, the farmer's market. The last couple of years, that's really taken off. We get about 3,000 people that attended that in 2017, and we get about 50 vendors each week, and then two free community events around that as well. And so, overall, we figure the sponsors have donated probably $30,000 in cash and an estimation of $17,000 in products and in-kind services to make that happen. So, again, not insignificant. Our gold sponsors, $2,500 and above donations. We specifically want to thank Ann Allen. Well, I think Ann wasn't here. CHI, come on up. Black Hills Energy. Gina V Physical. I think Mark is here. TD2 Doug Kelner. I thought you saw Doug. And Ally Pointer Mahasko Architects, and I think Laura Ally may be here. And then Urgicare Papillion, Denise Crane. Our silver sponsors, which we figure is $1,000 and above. Essentials Natural Family Health, Hannah Baron. Shimmer and Associates, Matt Sutton. Pinnacle Bank, Chris McMeacon. Edge Physical Therapy, Beth Bartels. I don't know if I saw Beth. Payroll Max, Ken LaRose. Walmart Papillion, Colton Drish. Learner Company, Jay Learner. American National Bank, Kevin Speck. I know Kevin's here. And Sam's Club of Papillion, Jeremy McDowell. Oh, thank you. We have our bronze sponsors. What I like about the bronze sponsors is this is a level that we start seeing some of the local not-for-profits stepping up and participating, and that's a big deal because this is a significant investment. The Papillion Junior Women's Club, Jackie Fowler. Silverstone Group, Dan Myers. Tobacco-Free Sarpy, Autumn Burns. I believe that Autumn is here. Bellino Enterprises, Vince Bellino. Oh, Vince.
The older version.
The older version of Vince. And Beam Muscle and Joint Clinic, Adam Bean. And Adam is here. Then we get a lot of in-kind donations, I mentioned. Papillion Times, Paul Swanson. Kyle. Yeah, Paul's here. Coca-Cola, Michael Chaplasky. Chick-fil-A Papillion, Kyle Schischler. Or Morgan. And Fairfield Inn and Suites, Blair Riffel. So again, want to thank each of those sponsors for allowing us to share. Lori, do you want anything to share? Next on the agenda is the Administrator's Report. Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Mayor Black. Just a couple quick items this evening. Again, thank you to all the elected officials. You've narrowed down the names to the community center to five names, so you can expect another email this week from Trent. We'll be asking you to rank order those five names in order of your preference, from one to five, and then we'll tally those results, and we should come up with a final name by the beginning of next week. So, thank you again for your participation. Lastly, Mayor Black and I are again trying to organize a council retreat sometime in February. Ally should have sent you a message. We were shooting for Monday, February 19th. If that doesn't work for your schedule, we can look for a Saturday morning. If you could let her know what your availability is, we probably need four hours or so of your undivided attention to get through our agenda, and I believe a couple of you have already responded, but we'll try and work on your schedule because I think it's important for, to have full attendance. So, thank you, Mayor Black.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilwoman Klug. Second by Councilwoman Gaines. Do you have any proponents? Do you have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item C. Get my agenda right. Hold on. Item D1, Ordinance 1800. An ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of certain unimproved real property consisting of approximately 1.87 acres located in the Papillion Business and Technology Park on the southwest corner of 72nd and Cornhusker Road, Papillion, Nebraska, legally described as part of Tax Lot 30, except parts taken for plat 261412 in Sarpy County, Nebraska, depicted as parcel one on Exhibit A attached to the ordinance and incorporated therein to Family Emergency Rooms LLC and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilwoman Jaworski. Item E1, Ordinance 1797. A request for a change of zone from single-family residential medium-density R2 to urban-family residential R3 for the property legally described as Lot 278 Walnut Creek Hills, generally located on the southwest corner of 90th Street and Highway 370, and the applicant is Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, and I'll call for any proponents, and I know the applicant is here as well. State your name for the record.
Two to R3, which allows for the construction of the church. We have no issues with staff support. We have a recommendation from planning, and appreciate your vote.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Ordinance 1779. A request for a change of zone from Agricultural AG to Mixed Use MU for the property legally described as Track 1, attractive land located in the west half of the northwest quarter of Section 30 Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and Track 2, the part of the northwest quarter of Section 30 Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located near the intersection of South 132nd Street and Lincoln Road. The applicant is Jerry Reimer Prairie Queen LLC. We have a number of related items. So, do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 1779? Motion by Councilwoman Stube. Second by Councilwoman Glover. Do you have any proponents? I know the applicant's here. Jerry, I won't call you necessarily up on every single item, so if you want to just give a general overview of this, and we have a little bit of a light agenda, if you want to just even give a little bit of an overview of the project to remind people, because it is a very unique development, if you'd state your name for the record.
31st Street, Suite 3. Can you give a little guidance here on turning this on? Gotcha. Okay, that doesn't... What I want to show you here, I guess, just to orientate you, this is the Prairie Queen development, and the land that we're developing is this area right here. This shows, I think what's very different about this project is we have, it's a multifamily housing project, but we've designed it as a neighborhood. And so, instead of having, you know, big buildings and big parking lots, we've created it as if it's a, as if it's a neighborhood, a community. One of the things, I think, if you take note on here, you really notice there's no parking lot. We've done a really good job of including the parking in garages, including a couple, two spots in one location, two spots in another location, and one of the ways that we were able to achieve that was by going with smaller buildings that we would have found in older communities such as Papillion, such as Dundee, products such as this where we have four plexes and six plexes. You can see here, we've designed some of the streets to actually indent a little bit to create a place to park. And so, for example, this is a door. This is a door. There'd actually be a door in the back of the building and a door on the other side. With the combination of the streets and the alley system and the garages, we were able to not concentrate parking in any one area. A larger complex today, typically, you'd have a hall corridor, multiple units exiting, coming down a stair corridor, where you might have 20, 30 people coming out, and then they want their cars nearby. All of these buildings have been designed to function more like a single-family home where they don't have common space. You walk right into your unit, and so therefore, you walk out and want to be close to your car. And so, by having multiple doors, I think we really created, I think it'll really be a once, first of a kind. We've done a lot of projects in the midtown area where they had built buildings in the, you know, 1900s, and it was, you know, more of a neighborhood and the fabric of the neighborhood, and we really tried to leverage the lessons we'd learned from rehabbing and doing projects in that community and said, "How could we build this brand-new in a cornfield by design?" And this is what we've come up with. Spent two years in the planning process, working with the city. We went through various iterations, refinements. I think it'll be a really exciting project when it comes out of the dirt.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Jerry, while you're up there, could you talk to us a little bit about what the timing of the project is, when you're planning on getting started, when you're planning on ending, how many different phases? What are you looking at doing first?
Yeah, okay. So, the first phase will be 123 units. That would be 25 buildings. Again, our largest building would actually be an eight-unit building. There's two, you know, duplexes, three plexes, four plexes. Our intent would be to start grading in the spring. The, I guess the one caveat to this is, if you look at the lumber price index, literally, it is about 33 percent higher than it was a year ago. We finished a project recently at 30th and Leavenworth Street in Omaha, and we spent 1.5 million on the lumber package for those, it was 137 units. I called up Millard Lumber, and I said, "Hey, these numbers you're sending me are feeling a little more expensive. Is it something about my design, or how much has pricing changed?" And so, I said, "Could you please plug in the numbers as if I bought the triangle again today?" And they gave me a bit of $2 million. So, I'm hoping, quite honestly, that lumber prices kind of come down a little bit, and so I guess I'm hedging my answer a little bit there. I obviously have to have my sources and uses with the bank match. We've secured financing, we've put budgets together. If the lumber prices stay as high as they are, I reserve the right to, you know, kind of throttle back a little bit. The reality is, we have at least six to eight months of infrastructure to go put in before we'd actually buy lumber. So, anyway, we've gotten those plans and are moving forward with that. We had, we had some silt fences all put up. We were actually ready to start grading this fall and just decided, "Let's make sure that we get through this process, dot our i's, cross our t's," and so we throttled back a little bit. But our intent is to move forward.
Great. So, how many different phases of the project?
So, there could be up to six phases. Part of that is, you know, frankly, because it's all private financing and there's not an SID mechanism, you know, we have to stage the infrastructure in tranches that I can afford to, you know, finance and the banks comfortable with. You know, in an SID, they'd probably go in and do the whole thing and put all the streets and the sewers in and so forth. We have to be a little bit more conservative than that on this.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, I just want to tell you that your comments on the lumber prices are very, very significant. I'd heard some national commentary about that, and of course, that's all primarily a result of the hurricanes. And now, we're, we're going to experience the consequences of that. I guess I'll just comment that I'm glad you commented on that. I'll be interested to see what that does with development around here. It'll either, you know, maybe have no impact. I doubt if that's going to be the case. It'll slow down development. We've seen recently some tremendous development pace around here. We just here this fall approved a good number of developments, just simply to get them going on the, on the grading. We may see in the coming six, eight, 10 months that they just sit there because the lumber prices have caused house prices to go beyond what's reasonable, what they can sell. So, I, you know, I'll be interested to see how fast you can move along now. I don't think you're in a different pack, a different situation than a lot of other developers. And so, I'll thank you for bringing that up and explaining that because that's something that we really do need to take, take a look at and see how it affects the development around Papillion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Related item F2, Resolution 180006. Approval of a recommendation to approve an application received by Sarpy County from Prairie Queen LLC to connect nine residential lots with future phases, adding an additional 30 residential lots and two limited commercial lots to the Hilltop Outfall Sewer pursuant to the County Industrial Construction Act. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 180006? Motion by Councilwoman Stube. Second by Councilwoman Klug. I'll call for proponents. I'll just note, Jerry, that the comments will carry over to each of the items, so you don't have to keep coming up unless you want to. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F3, Resolution R180007. A request for a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the northwest quarter of Section 30 Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located near the intersections of South 132nd Street and Lincoln Road. The applicant is Jerry Reimer Papillion Queen, Prairie Queen LLC. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180007? Motion by Councilwoman Klug. Second by Councilwoman Florence. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Related item F4, Resolution R180008. Approval of the Prairie Queen subdivision agreement. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R180008? Motion by Councilwoman Stube. Second by Councilwoman Gaines. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Also related, F5, Resolution R180009. A request for the approval of the Prairie Queen Mixed Use Development Agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180009? Motion by Councilwoman Jaworski. Second by Councilwoman Klug. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Still related, F6, Resolution R180010. A resolution to approve the construction and reimbursement agreement between Prairie Queen LLC and Nebraska Limited Liability Company and the City of Papillion. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180010? Motion by Councilwoman Glover. Second by Councilwoman Florence. Proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thanks, Jerry. Item F7, Ordinance 1796. Approve the vacation of Shepherd Street right-of-way at the corner of South 114th and Shepherd Street, legally described in Exhibit A. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1796? Motion by Councilwoman Stube. Second by Councilwoman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F8, Resolution R180002. I don't know if we want to do this one. Approve the appointment, approve the appointment of the Public Works Director and City Engineer. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180002? Motion by Councilwoman Klug. Second by Councilwoman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents other than Mr. Thompson? Any council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. You want to take an oath of office?
Jeffrey L. Thompson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and partially.
Perform the duties of Public Works Director.
Perform the duties of Public Works Director.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Or a member of any political party or organization.
Or I'm a member of any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow of the government.
That advocates the overthrow of the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
That I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Or any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jeff, thanks again. People, I think most people are aware, but Marty Lemming's retiring. Well, we got a few more weeks left. Couple. Basically, a year ago, Marty notified us that he was going to be retiring, and about that time, Jeff kind of stepped into the public works position and was able to basically shadow with Marty for almost a year in the job. So, he's had a year-long job interview, and tonight was the statement of you passed. So, congratulations again. It's all the regular agenda items. Next are administrative reports, and no committees met the last two weeks, I don't believe. Because we did elect a new Because we did elect a new council president, and then annually, it is time to reshuffle the committee assignments. I think most everybody has given me feedback on what their preference is. If you have not, shoot me that email, and then probably at the next council meeting, we'll have the reorganization of the committees. Any comments from the floor? And if you'd state your name for the record.
Autumn Skyburns. I actually wasn't planning on coming to speak tonight, but then I was coming to get that anyways, so I decided I might as well. I'm already here. So it's been almost a full month since everything happened, and I still don't feel like there's an adequate response from the council or the administration. Specifically, there's been no clarification about the fact that there was boundaries and maps given to MAPPA when it was promised to be an independent process. There's been no attempt to explain. When there's been opportunities, there has been more time spent on, oh, I didn't know she was running. I didn't take her seriously. I think you guys are really missing out on a good opportunity to engage people right now. We're all humans. We're citizens. We're community members of Papillion. I hope you understand that my true, true intention is to build community. And two weeks ago, you guys had a ton of people here, and they were knocking on the door, and they were saying, we want to be engaged. We want information. And I don't feel that simply saying, we'll post the agenda on Facebook is adequate response from a city that claims to be a top five in the nation. Then you are claiming to be an administration and a council that should be top five in the nation. When I opened my utility bill a day or two ago, I was so frustrated because I thought for sure there would be something from the mayor. I thought that you would have something that would say, hey, guys, there are hundreds of you that got new representation, and we've heard from you guys, and here is the new map. Here even better is maybe the council members' information so that you can contact them because we heard you. We heard the calls. We heard the emails. We heard the hundreds of comments on, let's talk Papillion, let's really talk Papillion. There were adequate opportunities that I've tried to give you guys. I've really given you the benefit of the doubt many times, and I'm really frustrated right now because I'm not even seeking a seat anymore, and I'm still missing time from work because people are calling me every morning. People are wanting to understand what had happened, and I want you guys to participate in explaining what happened. So tonight, I'm asking you for a concrete way that you can inform the citizens of Papillion, who their new representation is, what happened, and fully answer the question of, did you have to have a signed ordinance on the 14th of December, or did you simply have to have a written notification? Those are things that the city citizens continue to ask you, and I really would love to not keep coming back here every two weeks and asking you. So tonight, I want to remind you that government is of the people, for the people, by the people. We are asking you, I am asking you, to please don't discourage people to get involved in the political process here. People are heartbroken about what has happened. And it's not about me not getting to run anymore. It's about the fact that they really thought you guys all had their best interests at heart. And it's really frustrating that I'm getting notes from people from actually across the United States. Because I had been planning this for a long time, saying, man, we didn't even know you, and we knew you were running for that. See, we've heard you. We've seen things. So it was, it personally was a slap in the face for you guys to pretend you didn't know when you see me at a lot of things. And that kind of behavior will encourage people not to participate, and we don't want that. So right now, you have a prime, prime golden opportunity. People want to be involved. They're giving you the opportunity. They'll come, they'll speak with you. They want to know. So please, next utility bill, have something in there. Tell people who their representation is, so that way, they're not just complaining into this empty vault on Facebook. And you'll see that people really do care. Because I think I proved that by knocking on doors. All those people that showed up last week, those weren't my friends since birth. Those are mostly people I met over the last two years doing this. So please, please listen when I say just, really listen to what your constituents are asking you to do. Because I believe that this is a top-five city. I do. I love the street I live on. I love my community. I love the schools. I love the businesses. I love working here. I love serving my community here. Please make this a better situation. Let's turn this into something that can be a great thing. Look at how they responded. They found a way to engage the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? See none? Any council comments? Mr. Mumgaard.
Yeah, I have two comments. One, I want to commend all of the staff that had anything to do with the downtown lighting. I have received numerous comments about the impression that gives of people, to people who drive through Papillion, both residents and non-residents. So anybody who spent any time putting up those lights, I want to extend to them a big attaboy. That is something that has had a, you know, surprisingly large effect on people who see Papillion. And I'm very proud of the people who, you know, both the directors, the staff, everybody who had anything to do with it. I'm very proud of what they did. Secondly, I want to comment on the comments we've heard the last couple meetings about our ward boundary decisions. Unfortunately, the structure of our meetings and state law doesn't let us respond directly to comments that citizens come forward, so I'll address my comments instead to the council members. I'm not, hey, it's no surprise to you, I'm not happy with the way it went. I'm not happy with the decisions I made in not, in voting to waive the second and third readings. I suspect it wouldn't have made any difference one way or the other, and I don't judge anybody, and I don't, you know, I don't have any concerns that there was any ulterior motives going on. But as I look back over it, and I think we all ought to learn from 2020 hindsight, that we can do things better. And I don't know if this situation will ever come up again, but I am going to explore what kind of ordinances, ordinance changes could be put into place to give us, to give us and future councils better guidance on what do we do in that kind of a situation so that we don't find ourselves in a situation we found ourselves where we get criticized. Fairly or unfairly, we got criticized. And I don't think, you know, and I don't want to sit on a council that does things that lead to criticism from the citizens. So I will be exploring what, if any, both legislative and ordinance changes might be appropriate. If any of my fellow council members, mayor, or staff has any ideas, please send them to me, and we'll see where it goes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Clug.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to all the staff members that have worked on Lincoln Street. The lights are on. It's very well lit. It's much easier to drive in the evening, and I know many of us were requesting it. We wanted it a while back. I think the understanding's out there that it was cooperation and timing with OPPD, I believe. But thank you. It's there now, and it is making a significant difference to all of us who do drive that stretch of Lincoln Road. So thank you for the efforts.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Number of us, including Councilwoman Glover, met with some county officials and some other private organizations about bidding on a baseball tournament, a regional one, for 2018 and 2019 having to do with American Legion. So working on that, a cooperative effort amongst a number of organizations to try to win that. Both Chief Bowes, Chief Lyons, myself and some others, had some meetings with a private foundation around public safety that's maybe interested in coming down to Sarpy County and doing some things to help fund some initiatives, and so we're having ongoing conversations there. Just a couple of other updates. Mr. Mumgaard, you mentioned potentially doing something at the legislature. Just a reminder for everybody, we are heading into the legislative session, and we have a United Cities meeting on Monday. And again, we meet every month, so if council does have some specific items that you think United Cities should tackle at the legislature, raise those to Ms. Myers, and we can get those on the agenda and see if those are United City items to work on. Also, as a reminder, the annual report typically is mailed out between Christmas and New Year's. That is in final, well, it's done. It's in, editing is done, and it's to print now. That'll go out the end of January. That was held up so we could have the updated wards and representation and that. So the end of January, the annual report will be mailed to every single household in Papillion, and that will have the updated information with contacts. I think that's most of the updates. Any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilwoman Glover? Second by Councilwoman Gaines. Please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
We are adjourned.